Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tracy, can you hear us okay?
We're still not getting a feed from them right now.
Yeah, I can hear you guys just fine.
All right, great. One, two, before we do roll call. Can we do a quick roll call of board members and budget committee members in their room in four to three seconds? So we'll start with Mike Mendez.
Hi.
Larry Wells?
Here.
Carol McReed?
Here.
All right, enough to be back. Terry Callmody?
Here.
Tracy Rowe?
Here.
Hopefully I'm under this. Suzanne Dwyer, did you get it? Yay, okay. Sarah McCollum?
Here.
Okay.
That was good.
Okay, great. And Kate Jones is absent, excuse me. Thank you, good to go. So next up is review, adjust, approve, agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to add in. Yeah, roll the budget committee.
You want to add that number, at number four?
Yeah, we'll just add the four, move all of them down.
Paul Farbough? Sarah McCollum?
Aye.
Suzanne Dwyer?
Aye.
Tracy Rowe?
Aye.
Carol McReed?
Aye.
Carol McReed? Larry Wells?
Yes.
Mike Mendez?
Yes.
Sarah Mitchell, both aye. Okay, so that brings us to number four, our new number four, which is role of the budget committee. We'll just run through these real quick, so just as a reminder for everyone. The role of the budget committee includes: request additional information if needed; determine the levels of spending but not the specific programs; and approve the proposed 2025-2026 budget prior to the final adoption by Jefferson School. Any questions on the role of the budget committee? That brings us to the number, our new number five, which is the election of a budget committee chair. Do you have any nominations for a budget committee chair?
I move Mike Mendez.
Of course.
He does it so well.
We gotta share the wealth.
Do you have any other nominations? If that, if we can call for, oh, I'm gonna start with Mike Mendez.
Aye.
Uh, Larry Wells? There.
Larry.
We're approving the chair. Do you approve Mike? Do you approve of Mike per chair?
Yes.
Okay. Carol McReed?
Aye.
Carol McReed? Tracy Rowe?
Aye.
So Suzanne Dwyer?
Aye.
And Sarah McCollum?
Aye.
I'll hand it over to you, Mike.
Great. No idea what I'm doing. I think we have. I need to get my stuff straightened out.
Number four, I agree.
Okay. So, oh, we're doing the vice chair, right?
Right.
All right, so, um, any elections for budget committee vice chair?
I move Sarah McCollum.
I don't know what that means.
Anybody, any other second? All right. I have a motion to, uh, revote or let's start off with. I don't like that's double sided thing, sorry. Um, all right, we'll start over there. Sarah?
I don't know what it's supposed to be.
We're voting for you. You're voting for yourself.
May. I mean, aye. Aye.
Suzanne.
Aye.
Uh, we're gonna go with Terry.
Aye.
We're gonna go with Tracy.
Aye.
Okay, Carol? And Terry? And Larry?
Yes.
And myself, I vote aye. Congratulations. Can I just do my responsibilities over here? Yeah, bud, do anything? All right. So, next up is just reviewing the budget, right?
So we have a point for budget committee reporter.
Oh, yes. All right, we need to appoint the budget committee reporter. I move to appoint Jennifer Ortell to be the recorder for the 2024-25 Jefferson School District Budget Committee.
Aye, second.
Sweet. Third, fourth? All right, and we'll go ahead and vote. Um, we'll start off with you, Larry. I didn't get that one, did I? Oh, look, from the back of this one, okay. All right, Larry?
Yes.
Okay. See, I gotta go back. We'll go with Terry.
Aye.
All right, Carol?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
All right, uh, there we go, Suzanne?
Aye.
And Sarah?
Aye.
All right. And we pass that. All right, we're moving on to superintendent budget message.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I just want to thank our board and budget committee members for all the period of time to serve on the budget committee. Your budget message is in your folder, and I'm just gonna leave it to you. In December 2024, we began sharing information about the possibility that Jefferson School District could be facing budget challenges for the 25-26 school year. That possibility has turned into reality, and the proposed budget reflects those budget challenges. Although the governor's recommended budget of $11.36 billion provides an increase in the state's school fund, it is not enough to help combat a continued decline in enrollment, an increase in purse cost, an increase in cost to provide salary and benefits for our dedicated personnel, and an increase in cost to provide services to meet the needs of our students who come to us with complex and significant needs. School districts are funded to provide education, but we are expected to provide medical care, solutions for food and housing insecurity, social work, crisis intervention, mental and behavioral health services, and more. We understand that these services are critical for healthy students and schools, however, they continue to be a largely unrecognized obligation within the state's school fund. Sorry. We are proposing a budget that allows the district to continue to provide services to students and work toward our vision of inspiring, empowering, and preparing all students to succeed based on existing estimates. Jefferson School District will need to be very deliberate in allocating its resources and using our funding carefully and efficiently so that we can continue to provide opportunities to all students, ensuring they receive an excellent education and the support services they need in order to achieve success. Every staff member at Jefferson is working hard to meet our students where they are academically and socially. I want to thank the school board and the budget committee in advance for the time they will give to the budget process this year. The budget decisions are never easy and will have an impact on our staff and most definitely our students. Meeting mandated requirements and complying with federal laws and rules required by the state of Oregon, coupled with limited resources, is a most difficult challenge. The 2025-26 proposed budget document has been prepared in accordance with the requirements of local budget laws, ORS 294.391. The budget provides information to the budget committee, patrons, and staff of Jefferson School District 14J regarding the district's financial plan for the operation and the school district for the 25-26 school year. The proposed budget document, as presented, reflects the best financial information that the district had at the time this document was prepared and printed. Once the budget committee approves the Jefferson School District proposed budget document, it will be the responsibility of the administration, under the direction of the school board, to make adjustments in the budget to deal with changes in resources and requirements. It is a privilege to serve as superintendent of the Jefferson School District. This first year has given me the opportunity to learn about the challenges, commitment, and excellence in our community. I look forward to being able to continue as your superintendent and to advocate for the support and funding needed to educate our students.
Thank you. All right, and we go on to budget presentation.
Okay, can we take it? I do. I'm gonna hand it over to Hattie Truitt, our business manager.
I also want to thank you guys for volunteering your time to support our school district. It's really important that you're here with us, and I really appreciate it, guys. Okay, so what I'm gonna do this year is the same as last year. I'm gonna flip through pages. You've had the budget document hopefully for 10 days and have written out any questions that you may have. If you have any questions on those pages, ask them at that time, and then we'll take comment from the community at the very end, okay? All right. So our first one is on page five, and it's the general fund. So this year, we have $12,164,090 for our general fund for 25-26, which makes 68% of our total budget. It moved up, I think it was 67% last year. So the first one is our general fund revenue. Based on the information that we had at the time that we filled this budget, and on page seven, Jen. Suzanne, there we go. Two more, thank you. There, okay. So this is our general fund. Is there any questions on this? This is our state's school fund, our local revenue from our property taxes, common, common school fund, county school fund, small high school grant, high cost disability. No questions? Okay, we're just gonna pop through this. So the first one on page nine is the general fund, $1111, which is our elementary school programs. Next page.
I just had a question.
Sure.
Because it's a pattern I see, uh, all through here. But I was just curious why the purse went up so drastically. I mean, is that just something they made a change to and they increased the amounts or?
Every two years, they do a study. Melman do it, does a study. And they're looking at the whole package. Our people that are currently retired, our people that are forecasting to retire. And this year, the next biennium, our purse increased.
It went, yeah, I mean, yeah.
It's a 10% increase.
I was just like, wow.
It increased substantially, doubled.
Yeah.
Yeah, it really did. And you'll also notice.
And that, and that was my other question, because that was the same pattern I saw of it really jumping up too. So what affects that? I was curious.
Well, when the legislation makes mandates. And, and doesn't support us with the funds, it's an incumbent mandate. With the laws that they changed in recent years, our unemployment is projected to go higher. So we used to pay .01% for the first five years I was here. This last year, it changed to .5%. Next year, we've been told it's going to 3%, and we pay into a trust. So we are not budgeting for, we pay into a trust, and what that means is we have money sitting with the state, and so when someone draws unemployment, they dip out of that, the non-direct build. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So our associated payroll costs, I looked at this, it went from 30% of our salary
Yeah.
to between 40 and 44% of our salary. And that doesn't mean the health insurance, life insurance, or a 403B match. So.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Three questions.
Hattie, can I add to that a little bit?
Yeah.
Suzanne, in the year 2000, we put out a levy when we saw purse going up. The board did.
Oh, okay.
And it actually saved us, what did we figure, $3 million?
More than $10.
Really?
$3 million it per, over those last 20 years. So, um, that is coming to an end. Is that why our rates are jumping up?
Yeah, they're actually gonna even go higher in two years. Because our, because our bond will sunset.
Oh, okay.
And we'll have to pay the normal rate that all districts pay that don't have, a lot of our districts do have bonds.
Yeah.
You know, so, but right now, we're not planning to go out for bonds.
Yeah.
So, you know, we just have to watch that. Okay. And we're not unique to this either. Oh, no, no, this is across the state.
It's hitting everybody, I bet.
Absolutely. Yeah, their employment cost, their purse rates have increased substantially.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is not unique to our, our district.
Just to, uh, just to hop in there, so the increase in purse rates is an additional $400,000 cost to the district. For.
Jeez.
This year.
Just for this year?
Yes.
From this year to next year, it's a $400,000.
So, does, so does that also play in why the biggest, the big difference as well in unemployment compensation? Where it jumped up?
No, it jumped up because.
Significant.
For the first four years I was here, since 2018, it was .01% paying into the trust.
That was .5%.
Then it went to .5% this year. Next year, it's going to 3%, so it's increasing 2.5% of our salary. And we pay that quarterly with our payroll quarterly report to the state of Oregon, so it considers the trust and earned interest. And then when people draw unemployment, then it's paid from that trust to the unemployment office for that.
And it's kind of like you said, because they're forecasting there could be more unemployment, so that's why the need to.
Well, they changed laws. They, they allowed, um, staff to be able to draw while they're on break.
Oh, that's true, too.
Right, so, so that impacts our percent as well, so they're predicted. Great questions. Yeah, okay, yeah. All right, so the second page, or the, you know, page 11, is the elementary extracurricular. Page 13, this is the middle school programs. Page 15, our middle school extracurricular. Page 17, our high school programs. Page 19, high school extracurricular programs. Page 21, our programs for talented and gifted. Page 23, our restricted programs for students with disabilities.
I have a question on this one. So it's the only one that I saw that was proposed for like, how it never went down, because the FTE did not change.
Correct, that could be because someone either moved out of that program, left a position open, and rehired at a, at a lower salary. That would make, okay, yes, thank you, you're welcome. Great question. Page 25, extended school year programs.
So, yeah, I had a question on that one too, because I noticed it went up, the licensed salaries went way up. So is that just? Yeah, is that just because we've had more of that happening too, like for summer? Let's see where that was extended school, yeah, for summer.
Our program lasted longer. It was more hours during the day, and it lasted longer, like five weeks.
Hmm, okay, yeah.
Page 27, this is less restrictive program with, for students with disabilities.
Hattie, I have a question, and I see this throughout, but I just, what does additional salary and mileage mean?
Um, additional salary and mileage would be if they have to work through their prep period. If they, um, go on a, help me out, Dawn, would it be going on a trip with a student, have to ride the bus with a student? Um, it could be any number of, of reasons we have to pay extra, right? You know, our classified staff. Um, sometimes if, if we have, um, our classified staff riding the bus with our students every day in, in the afternoons or in the mornings, then we would have to pay that extra time, and sometimes it could go into overtime, absolutely.
I also had a question, that there was tuition payments to other districts within state that was a chunk? What is that involved?
This is, I think it's like TyNet?
No.
No, what is that?
That is if we have to send a student to another program because we don't offer the types of services that a student needs.
Don't happen.
And we are anticipating possibly having to, to do that for the upcoming school year.
Okay.
They, yeah, if they need some services and we just don't have the types of programs here, then we may have to send them to a different program, and therefore we'd have to pay the tuition for that.
Hmm, okay.
All right, any more questions on that page? Page 29, public alternative program. Page 31, high school alternative education. You'll notice that we don't have a budget here because it's paid out of our SIA. Page 33, English second language. Page 35, teen parent program, this is new, just in case. Page 37, um, student safety.
What is that? Can you explain what general professional and technology services is?
This is, do you want to answer, Dawn?
Sure, so this would be a service that we contract with the RMI ESD for. Um, we contract with them so that, um, we have students that we need to do threat assessments on, or threat assessments for behaviors, or, um, threat assessments for, we have a sexual threat assessment. Um, and so we contract with the ESD to help provide those assessment services for students whenever we need them.
So is that something that's kind of on the rise as far as the need there? Because I know we haven't had to pay out.
We have, we've always used the ESD for these services. We have paid for it out of a different fund.
Okay, different.
Um, in the past, um, we actually used our WESD resolution dollars to pay for this service. Um, but this year, we're paying for it out of general fund, so that we can use our resolution money for other things.
Right, page 39, this is our counseling services. Page 41, we have nursing services.
Is there a reason why you expect this to go down like that?
Yeah.
Yes, we're purchasing different services from the ESD and lowering that just a little bit. So some is paid from the local service plan money, and some is paid from our general fund too.
And these would service the entire district, not just one school?
That is correct, district one. Page 43, psychology services.
I was wondering about that one too, because we hadn't paid anything out, so now it's a pretty big thong.
Uh huh, yeah, and it's because on the next, page 45, we have other psychology services, so we're doing the.
Okay, I was wondering, because, yeah, it went down on that one.
Correct, yeah, we're choosing to purchase a certain amount of TE for the psychologist, but we're also getting a different psychologist that can do testing that is a lesser cost to.
Oh.
So we've put it in the other psychology services on the next, on page 45.
But overall, together, they're far more than.
Yeah, yeah.
Word, yeah.
But again, some of the dollars could have been paid from our local service that needed close from the ESD. Great questions, you guys. Page 47, student support services. Page 49, we start curriculum development. So in the past, we've budgeted for science, for math, now we have to budget for health curriculum. Yeah.
So in the, in the other, in the individual schools, I didn't see any budgeting for textbooks, so, but this is for, what'd you say?
Health curriculum.
The health curriculum.
Yeah, we've, we've adopted math curriculum, then science curriculum, and now we're due to adopt new health curriculum.
Okay.
And our schools do get, um, $5,000 a piece for textbook purchases, and that is so that they can replace textbooks that have been lost, um, things like that. But as far as like adopting the full curriculum, it would come out of this particular fund.
Okay, because I was noticing in the school ones, there isn't any, there, there's zero. That's why.
It's in the.
Within the transfer, so the general fund transfers, um, into Fund 229, we, we transfer $5,000 a piece, just in case our each building needs different curriculum that they need to purchase, replace books, and need periodicals, just fees that they need individually. So the general fund does transfer $5,000 per building for that stuff.
Good.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, it wasn't really clear on like where, where's, where that actually happens in, in the book.
Got you, okay, and I'll point to 229 out when we get there. All right. Page 51, for library and media center. This is also supported from Title I and SIA as well. So you'll see that in our SIA budget and Title I budget.
And is this just for one library salary?
This is a .12 FTE of a classified employee for the library. The other is supported through Title I grants and our SIA grants.
Okay.
Yeah, so there are one FTE, it'll all account for the one FTE for the library in that, in those grants. When we get there, all, all pointed out to you. Page 53, assessment and testing. Page 55, tuition reimbursement. This is to reimburse our staff when they go and get college credits.
Our actual is a bit pretty low on that.
They have.
We're not anticipating that to stay that way, or?
Um, it just depends on who is in, doing college classes.
I'm just remembering, sorry, the tuition's going up, I'm pretty surprised.
Right. Yeah. Page 57, Board of Direct, Board of Education. Page 59, executive administration. Page 61, Office of the Principal. Page 63, Business and Support Services.
Oh, could we go back?
Sure. Okay.
Uh, 59, uh, did we invest in something more with computer hardware? I noticed that it gone up.
And.
Not, it wasn't a huge amount, but you know.
The $4,000.
Yeah.
A lot of our computer hardware comes from our technology budget.
Okay.
Key budgets for replacing our computers, and this year, we ran into a problem with our Windows 11. A lot of our computers aren't capable of, of having Windows 11 on our computers.
And so we have to, yeah.
You'll see his budget soon.
Yeah.
All right, page 63, Business Support Services. Page 65, Physical Services. Page 67, Risk Management Services, it's like first aid, our first aid trainings. Page 69, Operation and Maintenance of Plant Services, this is our case insurance. Page 71, Karen Edke, of our Building Services. Page 73, Karen Edke, of our Grounds. Page 75, Maintenance. Page 77, Security Services.
Hattie, I just have a question on the, on the line item for 75. Just touch base on, what does rentals mean?
Like, we have to go rent a lift, we do something in the gyms, or do our school board.
You're renting stuff, not that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, page 79, Vehicle Operations Services, this is our busing. Page 81, this is our, um, Special Ed Transportation Buses.
Do you expect that to go down, or are you just moving it? Do you expect that to go down, or are you just moving it from time to time?
Um, I'm expecting it to go down, I think we budgeted a little high last year at one oh five. And so we, wh- when we make our budget, we look at the past five years, what have we spent? And so we look at the increase of what we're paying the current year, and then we adjust it to what we think it's gonna be. We've a lot of history in building our budget.
And does this mean ODE re- reimburses you?
At seventy percent. General Fund, um, Warehouse and Distribution Services, page eighty-three, so telephone and postage, consumable supplies. Page eighty-five, Printing, Publishing and, and殊殊殊 services. Page eighty-seven, um, Public Information Services. It will, yeah. Page eighty-nine, Staff Accounting Services.
What is?
So that went way down.
That went way down because I had a reduction um, in my department.
What, what is account, uh, staff accounting services?
That would be the person who does my HR, my eight, current HR assistant. And I'm eliminating that position for next year in order to save the district money.
Thank you. Page ninety-one, Other Staff Services. Page ninety-three, System and Analysis Services. This is our Technology Department. And you can see like computer software and computer hardware. Um, page ninety-five, Programming Services. This is services that we purchased from Malam and ESD, it's the Data Integrations and Synergy Network Connectivity Power School. It just combined all of it, so. Page ninety-seven, um, this is our phone system, we have to go out for a new phone, so we. The next page ninety-nine is Welfare Activity Services.
So what is that?
So, so we're looking at um, partnering with the community to. Uh, it's called the Services Integration Team. And this team of people, um, both together. People from hospital, different community members, um, so that we can help, um. Help our community members with services that they need. And so they ask, if, because they wanted to get one started in Jefferson, they have them in SIO, North Saniam, Cascade. Um, and they wanna get one started in Jefferson so that we can help our community. Um, and they asked for the district to contribute five thousand dollars.
How does that differ from our resource center?
Our resus, Resource Center is a little bit different in that, you know, we have um, clothing. Hygiene supplies, things like this, this would be a committee of people that get together. Uh, let's say that they have a committee in the community that is in need of um. Trying to get, you know, they have mounds and mounds of laundry that they need to get found, and so they may work with a community person. That can offer, you know, will give you laundry passes. Um, I was sitting in, I went to SIO's, um, one of the uh. People that work in SIO came to that committee, they had a family, um, that was dealing with, multiple families that were dealing with lice. And so they were able to purchase um, a ton of lice kits. So that the schools could give out lice kits. Um, so they just provided a different type of services than what our Health Resource Center does.
Right, cause I know the, the intention of the Resource Center was to provide, you know, either medical or even the opportunity to go and wash your clothes and whatnot.
We have one washer and one dryer, and we do have people that utilize those facilities. Um, we have tried to get, um, a couple of different um, medical doctors, medical facilities to come in here. Um, that was done prior to me leaving and just a little bit in the beginning in the fall. And we've not been successful in securing somebody. I'm hoping that with the Service Integration Team coming into Jefferson to build those relationships. And I'm actually hoping to get um, a partnership with maybe Samaritan or something like that, that will come in and, and. Do the medical side. But we've not been successful in securing anybody. The last one that we tried to get, which was in early in the fall when I got here. Um, they discontinued their community outreach program. And that was, uh, was that Providence? Who was that? No, that was Samaritan out of Fort Alice, yeah. So, kind of hoping we can establish a relationship with.
I think so.
Page one oh one is our Transfer Funds. So this fund, I pulled this piece of paper out because um, this is for our sports. General Fund helps with our sports. We, um, our lunch fund, the ODE directs us to spend a little money and put into our, um, food service. Um, our Early Retirement Fund, you'll see that, or not, you won't see it, but I'm happy to say that our very last early retiree will come off in October. So we, that's, that's gonna stop soon. Um, but textbooks transfer fifteen hun- uh, fifteen thousand dollars. Our demolition loan, we have to pay for that, and then our self-loan, which was our heating for the old middle school. And then, um. That's it, that's all for the general fund.
That, that's all in the uh, fifty-two hundred Transfer Fund?
Yeah, that's what comes out of the general fund and is put into athletics two fifty-five, um, food services two fifty. And you'll see those transfers when we get to those funds. Page one oh three is our Operating Contingency. We have been, I'm gonna knock on wood. We put fifty thousand in there in case we have an emergency. And that's board um, approval, so if anything, an emergency happens, we have to come to the board and get a, a resolution to spend that money. So it's there in case we need it, and we did prepare for it during our budget. Page one oh five is Unappropriated Ending Fund Balance, this is just a plan, just in case we need to have it. We haven't used it, knock on wood. And then page, page five. Page one oh six is our um, expense by object part. And you can see that the salaries is forty-two percent and the employee benefits is thirty-one percent of the overall general fund. And then purchase services is eighteen and then a few small ones.
On the uh, page before, on the one oh five, the reserve for next year, is that um, that one fifty is, does not. If you need to use that or allocate that, that does not need to be approved by the board? So what's the difference between putting those into two different?
This is planning for next year. The fifty thousand is planned, excuse me, the hundred and fifty thousand is planned for twenty-six, twenty-seven. Right, the contingency, the fifty thousand is planned for the year, for twenty-five, twenty-six in this budget. So this hundred and fifty thousand is in case you need it for the next year.
Cause this says twenty-five, twenty-six, so.
I would have to look in depth to see what we could use that for. But they, it used to be two hundred thousand, it's always been in the budget, we could look back, it's always been in the budget. And it's a hundred and fifty now, a hundred and fifty thousand now, and we haven't had to use it.
Yeah, cause I'm, I'm just, I looked at the, you know, the actual for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three and. And so I'm just curious of how, one, the amount, and two, what is the difference between this one and the fifty thousand? That is in reserve.
Well, the fifty thousand is for the year of the budget, this hundred and fifty thousand is for future years.
So would that be like to cover the biennium?
Potentially.
Cause the fifty thousand is only for one, one.
Yeah, now we're gonna go on to Special Revenue Funds, these are two hundred funds, these are the grants, um. Monies that you, revenue that you receive and, and expenses that you spend. And it just keeps them in a category, so the first one on page one oh eight is Moving Science Forward. This is just actual money that, this is a beginning fund balance this fold. So we haven't used it in a long time and don't plan to use it, cause we have our new science curriculum. Page one oh nine is ORRTI. It's history, really. Page one thirteen is Malam and Promise. This is a program that we work with Malam and ESD with. Page one fourteen and one fifteen, this is our Early Literacy Grant. And you can see that it basically doubled. Which is a good thing. And you can see that point one five for the classified salary, that's a portion of our media. That's the, when we looked at the median, the median was point one, so we got a general fund, this is another portion of that salary. Page one fifteen. The classified salary, the one twelve. This is Title One in our district, used to be split between two oh six and two twenty-six every other year. It's two twenty-six, so this is history. Page one eighteen, SOP, the Lemon ESD. This is history as well. Page one twenty and one twenty-one is our Title Two Quality Teacher, this is a grant that we received to, um, bring professional development to our teachers.
Do we have a count company, or do we keep? Do we have to report that to ODE of how many quality teachers we have, or I know they, we used to do highly qualified, but.
We do. Yeah, we have a staff positions report that is um, done in April of every year. That we upload and it looks at the longevity of our staff, our teachers, and that's how they determine. Um, it's in part of the formula, or it's in the formula for the State School Fund. Because the, as the data has an average, and if we have teachers that are above that, it gives us more money in our State School Fund.
Uh, blue, do you guys, do you have a number that?
I do, for next year. It's point seven one. That's our point seven one is above the average in Oregon. It, it's an experience adjustment, the district's average teacher experience is twelve point eight years, the state average teacher experience is twelve point oh nine. And so what it does is we get to take that point seven one by twenty-five dollars. And it increases it, instead of being forty-five hundred dollars, we get four thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents into the formula. So i- it's really good to keep our teachers, you know, yeah, retention is where to go. Page two eleven is a miscellaneous grant, this was a Spent Supplies Grant that we received, it was a one-time grant. Page one twenty-four and one twenty-five is a miscellaneous grant. Page one twenty-six and one twenty-seven is In-Lock, it's a program through, um, what's that college in Salem? Through Schumacher. And a couple of our employees work with them. And they get to go to um, professional development and we get reimbursed when they go. They pay for the conference to, um, like ag and automotive. Page one twenty-eight and one twenty-nine, this IDEA Part B, that's a federal grant. We're hoping they go up, just because we budget and we think it's going up, we have to look at what we actually get. And then we have to do Plan B, right? So these are just, these are, a lot of these, we don't know the dollar amount they're giving us, so we have to take our best guess. And a lot of times, Dawn's working with the superintendent saying, okay, you're gonna reduce your federal grants by five or ten percent. I'm working with the, at the finance directors and the business managers, what are you guys doing? And then we come together and say, okay, what are we gonna do, right? So we have a lot of input. Page one thirty and one thirty-one is history, it's, it was the wellness grant that we received years ago. We used to receive Title Three, this is history as well. Page one thirty-four and one thirty-five is Title Four, Safe Drug, we don't, this is the wrong name for this, I really need to change that. This is our Title Four Grant, it is a federal grant. We are budgeting eighteen thousand, so we're hoping that we get it, but again, if we don't get the money, we don't spend it. Right, so these are, these are grants we're thinking we're gonna get, but if we don't get it, we don't spend it.
So what is the proper title?
Um, our Title Four, but is, is it ETHA? No.
No, I think it's Safe and Healthy Students.
Okay, we just, we need to change that.
What we have, what we have used this money for is, um. Oh, we've used it to set up food plans for, uh, reset room at the elementary school. Um, we've used it to purchase um, AEDs. Um, I used it this year to purchase um, new emergency operating procedure manuals. That will go up in the classrooms in the fall. Um, so anything to do to keep our schools and our students um, safe and healthy is what you can use that money for.
That was probably the name of the, the grant a year ago, or a few years ago. But I'll change that before they adopt it. Um, page one thirty-six and one thirty-seven, this is our Career Pathways Grant for Automotive and Am. Page one thirty-eight and one thirty-nine, this is our Abbot Call and Career Readiness. This is, um, page one forty and one forty to one forty-two is our Title One A. And you'll see the classified salary, the point four four is the rest of that one FTE.
Say that, say that last part.
It's Object One Twelve, the Classified Salary, if you look at the FTE for next year, it's point four four. So if you take the point one five, the one two and the point four four, that's that one person. They're just being paid from three different. Three different allotments of money.
And instead of being licensed, they are now classified?
No, they were never licensed, they were classified. And, um, we decreased our budget by five percent. Um, but I've also heard just recently that it could be the same as this year.
Usually we know in February what we're getting, um, for our federal programs, like our title programs, Title One, Title Two, Title Four. Um, we still have not heard what we're getting yet, so.
And it looks like it's the same from last year, but last year I didn't have the amount we got, right? So I took my best guess, but this year it's two hundred and twenty-six thousand, we actually got more last year in actual revenue, right? And so the calculation is five percent of what we actually got. So I actually estimated lower last year than what we actually bought, but we had plenty of spending authority. Because that's what we're doing, this budget is, is, what do we know at this time? This is authorizing us to have spending authority come July one, once this budget is adopted by, by you guys, by the board and approved by the committee.
Now, just to go back to the, your earlier comment that says we've never had licensed staff, so then, why do we have a point five licensed staff or adopted of last year?
Oh, I thought you were talking about this one person, I thought you had asked the question of this one person used to be licensed. I thought you had asked the question of this one person used to be licensed, now they're classified.
Well, I'm just, you know.
No, we do have, we do have a one F T in there. And if you turn the page, we have a point five F T in there as well. We have halftime counselors. We have um the English second language, language person, and then we have a point four four classified. But it's just that the function is different. Right? But twelve seventy two is title one, twelve ninety one is E S L. And then twenty one twenty two is counselor. And then library media. So there's a portion there. It's confusing. Alright, we ready to move on? Page one forty four and one forty five, test for success. We um aren't doing it this year or next year. Page one forty six and one forty seven, this is the textbooks that we um transfer into. So if you look on the revenue, the top page, the fifty two hundred um. Fund, not fund, um function is the transfer, which is the fifteen thousand. And then you'll see we allocate it by building, elementary and middle school. So that's where the revenue is coming for each building. Pages two thirty eight, or one forty eight and forty nine, this is technology. This is in case we do E rate. And if we're up for E rate, we have to budget for it. And so we're not up for it at this point. We may be going out for grants, but at this point, we, we're not up for any rate. Two thirty two and, or page one fifty and one fifty one is outdoor school. Which I heard was a really big hit last week. Alright, page one fifty two and one fifty three. Business title four, student support and academic enrichment. This is the one that we don't get no more. This is the S A one. Page one fifty four. To one fifty six, this is our high school success. This is where we pay for our um career academy, our students to go. And um we have eighteen slots this year. Page one fifty eight to one sixty, this is our summer learning. And I did budget for it. So just in case we do it. Page one sixty two and one sixty three, this is that staff retention grant that we received. Page two thirty eight and, or page one sixty four and one sixty five, S I A set aside from Valama D S D. Page one sixty six and one sixty seven, this is our R E N program through Valama D S D. We may or may not get this.
What is a R E N program?
It's a regional educator network program. Um, they provide us with somebody to work with our new teachers, so new teacher mentors. Um, they also work with our Latinx parent club. So we'll get money um through this, for those. Then through the E S Bs.
Page one sixty eight and one sixty nine, this is our early retirement fund that will be going away. Our last health insurance payment will be in October. This is in retirement. We used to, when I got here, we had like picture seven people on their early retirement. So it was an army to retire early and have your insurance paid for, for seven years. And the district took on that expense. That has sunset because now we offer a four oh three B match. And so they've chosen that, and then this one will never, in my future, right now, I don't think it'll be offered again. It's a liability to our district. It's good for our retirees, but it's a liability to our students. And we have another rate of support for the term. Page one seventy and one seventy one, the Oregon library grant, this is a one-time grant that we received. Page one seventy two to one seventy four, this is our food service program. Page one seventy six to one seventy seven, this is our summer lunch program. This one is just history because we do our summer lunch program through our two fifty, right? If you look at page one seventy four, you'll see the function thirty one ninety five. That's the summer lunch program. We just don't have it in the special fund.
Are we still, are we still above the percentage to you, looking forward to next year to receive free on-reviews for the district?
Yeah, I think we have three years left on the elementary and middle school. Two years left on elementary, middle school, and three years left on the high school because they just started this year. Page one seventy eight to one eighty three is our student success act. This is our S I A grant. That supports our, our students. This is a pretty big grant that we get. This is a cat tax that our businesses pay. That has brought us this money. It's a lot of work. Page one eighty six and one eighty seven, this is a farm to school garden grant. This is a grant that we received to do the gardening at that elementary school. Page one eighty eight and one eighty nine, this is emergency connectivity fund. This is history. Um, this is when COVID started and we had to get our kids distance learning ready. So this is our phone works. One ninety and one ninety one um was a miscellaneous grant that we received money. We actually received it and spent it, sixty six hundred dollars. So we don't predict getting, getting it. One ninety two and one ninety three, this one is our school-based health and resource center. This is if we get contributions and donations. So that's really ran basically by donations.
So you, so it's a stating that we would get contributions and donations of ten thousand?
This is stating that we could get up to ten thousand dollars. It gives us a spending authority to spend ten thousand dollars if we get.
If we get.
If the revenue doesn't come in, the expenditures don't flow. We budgeted ten. We actually received five in twenty three, twenty four.
And we didn't, did we receive, well, did we receive any so far for this?
I think we have.
I think we did. I think it was five.
Five thousand? Yeah, people, people donate to it. You, um, people are always bringing stuff in to donate to it. And utilizing it.
And if we are seeing book traffic through it?
Page one ninety four, one ninety five. So this one's a just in case. This is a just in case grant. Um, and I got a phone call the other day from one of my buildings that says, hey, can you give me this information? Because we may have the opportunity to get this grant. So that's what this one's for. It's just in case. If the revenue doesn't come in, expenditures don't go out. One ninety six and one ninety seven is our crack improvement project. We have received funds. This gives us spending authority to spend, but i- it'll just carry over year to year until we're ready to, to redo our track.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna get there though. This, one ninety eight, one ninety nine is our jewel settlement. We received thirteen thousand dollars so far, almost fourteen thousand dollars in the settlement.
What is, is that stamp or something or?
The jewels is that. Page two hundred and two hundred one is the new that is going with our S I A. Our literacy grant and our high school success grant. You guys have heard the integrated guidance plan? This is part of it. This is monies that the state is giving us. And this integrated guidance plan has the F S I. Has the high school success, has the early learning literacy grant, and it has the um S I A in it. Right? So when you think of the, when you hear the integrated guidance plan, it has those four grants inside that one plan. And that's why, yeah, it's a little work. Two oh two and two oh three is our A S B, our elementary A S B. So when they have monies that come in that pertain to our students. This is where they get to, to spend it out of. Two oh four and two oh four is our middle school A S B. Two oh six and two oh seven is our high school A S B. Two oh eight and two oh nine is our scholarship fund.
I just wanna go back to the high school. So they got significant um last year, they thought, you know, they went from sixty nine thousand to a hundred and ninety one thousand. What, how did it increase so much last year?
The actual, the first column is actuals, what happened in twenty two, twenty three. That's revenue that they brought in. And then in twenty three, twenty four, they brought in sixty nine thousand. And then the next column is what we budgeted. It's, it's this year.
So how close are they to a hundred and ninety one thousand?
They're not. They're not. They just get spending authority. If, if they had major money come in, they did a huge fundraiser. We need to have spending authority. Yeah, so that's why it's two hundred and nineteen thousand.
Yeah, I just wondered, you know, cause it, that, you know, last year it was over a hundred, hundred and thirty thousand. Why not a hundred and twenty thousand more? So I just thought they had some plan with every huge fundraiser, you know, fundraiser.
Yeah, well, this, this gives them the opportunity. That if they do, they will have spending authority if they can, you know, generate that.
Right, okay.
Good question. And then two oh eight, two oh nine is our scholarship fund. Page two ten and two eleven is a sunshine. This is for our district office. This is when we make copies and page of those copies at five cents a piece. It goes into a cup. When there's enough money, when there's ten bucks sitting there, we'll go put it in the bank. And if we wanna buy flowers, ferns. The district isn't paying for it. Our staff are for the district office. Two nine, two twelve, two two seventeen, two seventeen and Easter three funds. Those funds are gone. And I did it backwards. Two eighteen and two nineteen is Easter two. Ben, two ninety six. So I did two ninety five, two ninety six. So Easter two, those funds are gone too. That was for our um for COVID. The government supporting us. Page two twenty one is our debt service fund. So page two twenty two and two twenty three is our um cool school loan. This was for the heaters for the old and middle school. We receive a little revenue from the program. And then we have to transfer thirty eight thousand to cover the rest. So this is part of that fifty two hundred transfer fund. Page two twenty four and two twenty five is our first debt service fund. This is the bond that Terry was talking about a little bit ago. That we took out a bond, what, twenty, two thousand thirteen is when we took the bond out, two thousand three.
Two thousand.
It's a two thousand three series, and it sunsets in two twenty, it's twenty twenty seven. Page twen- uh, two twenty six and two twenty seven is our general obligation fund. This is building our elementary, our middle school and updating our elementary. Two twenty eight and two twenty nine is our demo loan. The general fund has to transfer today. And that's all for our debt service. The next is our capital improvement section. Page two thirty two and two thirty three is our capital projects fund. This is, this is a resource beginning fund balance. It's been rolling and we have not spent it. It's there in case we need it, but we haven't, you know, we budgeted for spending authority. Page two thirty four is our seismic grant. Page two thirty six is our ele- uh, middle school first seismic grant to retrofit the gemma peak with our bond. Page two thirty eight is a seismic grant improvement. It's the second grant, seismic grant for the elementary school to retrofit a portion of the building. Page two forty is our facilities assessment grant. We received this grant, twenty five thousand dollar grant to assess our facilities and what needed to be done. Two forty two and two forty three, this is our construction exercise tax. When people purchase a permit to re- to build a home, to build apartments. We get like a dollar sixty four per square foot. And it's help, it's to help our facilities. Um, keeping our facilities. It's a little bit of money to help our facilities and if used, two hundred and twenty five thousand in twenty two, twenty three. Hundred and fifty five thousand in twenty two, twenty four. And it depends on how much building is happening in your area. So we get it from both Marion County, cause people live in the county, and then people living in the city limits of Jefferson. That is correct. And it can only be used for the facilities. Page two forty four and two forty five is the old middle school improvements. This is part of the money we have left from the loan.
This is basically just to that building.
It's that loan that we brought, that we got. We haven't spent all the money. That is correct. Yeah. We budgeted the three nineteen is what we carried over, but we've spent some of that. But it's not showing what's happened in this year in our budget. Cause we haven't, we're not finished with this year, so we can't report our actuals yet.
Do we have a certain amount of year to spend that?
I'm not sure. I would have to look for conditions of. Page two forty six and two forty seven is the school-based health center. When we had all those donated contributions. Page two fifty and two fifty one is the total of our budget, seventeen million, seven hundred and forty one thousand, three hundred and sixty six dollars. Is our budget, our proposed budget for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six this year. And then Ms. Kay came and saw us, and she had some questions. So I'm just gonna read the questions and the end answers, okay? So um Kay came in and she wanted to know, what is the projected enrollment higher or lower? We're budgeting for six hundred and sixty five students. This year we budgeted seven hundred and fifteen. Right now, our enrollment is what, six eighty eight?
Six eighty, I believe it's six eighty.
Six eighty. Okay, so when we project next year, we're in January of this year, twenty twenty five. We're predicting for September of twenty twenty five, nine months later. We have to look at our seniors that are graduating in June, in May, right? And then we move all our kids down one grade level. And then we predict how many kindergartners are coming in based on the last five years. We're looking at about thirty six kindergartners coming in and seventy high school seniors graduating.
So what was your projected number?
Seven, or six hundred and sixty five students. We have about seventy high school seniors. And we predicting thirty six kindergartners coming in. And plus we have transfers. We have kids transferring in, transferring out. Um, so it's our best guess in January. And plus we have transfers, we have kids transferring in, transferring out, um, so it's our best guess in January. To um. To build our ADMR. Which is, or ADMW, which is our weighted, so it gives us um eleven percent on sped, it gives us a little O bridge, it gives us. More money for permanent students, it gives us small high school grant. Um, and that's, it's better of the two years, right, than um ADMW is better of the two years. Last year, we have had more students in second quarter than we do this year, so we get to use that in our formula. So it's always better of two years for the state's full fund payment. So the next question is.
Hey, I had a, can I just comment on that? So last night we went to the Willamette Educational Services District Budget Meeting. And uh kindergarten, all through that, the district, and there's twenty one schools in that district all around Marion County and. And Yamm Hill and so on. And they're all down on on kindergarten. In fact, their ADMW, in those, there's uh, it's like nine hundred. There are ninety six thousand kids in in that. In in the enrollment in that WBSD, and they're down a thousand children in in our area, so. It's down there, it's not Jefferson, it's down, it's down near Florida.
Our families having kids, you know, we could be coming into a generation where we don't have kids, so.
And that was your goal too, you know, two thousand and nineteen, so maybe. You'd think they'd have more kids than.
Okay, question number two. When budgeting for one FTE, how much is budgeted for benefits? For a PERS Tier One, Tier Two employee, it's forty four percent of their salary is associated payroll cost. For officer, it's forty percent of their salary, and that does include the health insurance. The life insurance that we give as a, as a benefit, or the um. Four oh three B match that we do as well, those are three benefits that's not included in that forty four percent. That's just unemployment, PERS, um, workers' comp, Social Security and Medicare, you know. So it's. Where is the district in its textbook's adoption cycle, or in health? How many students have a flyer hoped to attend our CTE location in Salem? Where is that budgeted, it's budgeted in High School Success? And we have eighteen slots, we're gonna spend about a hundred and three thousand out of that grant. To um, transport our kids to the Career Academy in Salem. These are, these are really good questions.
So what does, what kinda classes are offered there?
They have cosmetology, they have automotive, they have.
Cause I know we have automotive, we have welding and stuff at our own high school. So it's more maybe some other areas.
They have, right, construction, cosmetology, uh dental assisting, um, diesel mechanics.
Okay, yeah, that's good.
Yeah. And then, um, the last question was, what services are covered in the follow through, the fall, um, the. Flow through dollars with Willamette SD? So we purchased like the admin, the Willamette Promise for Teachers, the internet technology. We purchased Parents Square, the notification that goes out to our um parents. Um, support, sped services, Braille, occupational therapy, speech, language pathology, psychology, nursing. Um, we get quite, you know, we get four hundred and fifty nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars that flows through. So instead of hiring a Braille teacher for one student. We can purchase a portion of the Braille teacher for our one student, so. The districts that Willamette SD supports can, that that one FTE can support two to three to four schools. Right, so we don't have to hire a full-time FTE when we only need a portion of an FTE. So that's what we use our flow-through money.
Consequently, though, we see that those types of services end up. We see some struggles with trying to get the the services onboard because they are servicing everybody, so, right?
Well, it's definitely, well, it's what they offer too, so perfect example is psychology. The last year, we've had a hard time with psychology because it's all online.
Right, same with, yes.
Right, right, speech pathology. And so we dawn, we're trying to rack our brain, do we hire a speech pathologist? Do we hire a caterer consultant? Do we get a licensed nurse practitioner? You know, and. So we make those decisions when we're looking at our local service plan money. And think, how can we do this, and we're always thinking, how can we save that dollar?
Yeah, I mean, I know that. Online, getting online services is a lot more different than in-person services, and it is, especially for the kiddos.
Right, right, and and we work with Willamette SD and tell them our struggles, and we try to fight for the person to be in-house. And hopefully, they can get that. You know, cause they are working on getting psychologists to be more in the buildings.
And I know that in the past uh few years, there's been a little bit of a hard time trying to staff those. Especially, I mean, my son was in the speech, uh, so speech pathologist, like it was hard to find a stable one.
Yes.
And so. You know, you're searching for online and so what, it it was just a tough time.
Right, right, and coming up COVID, you know, people like to work at home. You know, so.
Just wanna know how they would do speech pathology online.
Right.
My son did speech pathology when he was two, four, and six, and they really needed to be in-person to show them. Yeah, it's really weird.
That's what makes it really hard with having, you know, just a portion of the service being brought, but then where are they? If we could get them in-house, it was different, you know, like earlier on, before COVID, they were in-house.
Right.
And they were traveling around our schools to do that, and then after COVID, they have yet, you know, they haven't been the same. My son just kinda was like, I don't know why I go dead, and there's, is.
But we are hoping and fighting to hopefully, and they are too, Willamette SD, they're great partners, and they are hoping to get people to. Um, visit the schools versus doing virtual, I, they're trying to work on that.
Under uh, your special revenue fund, you have a lot of grants and uh that sort of thing, uh, are you. Uh, concerned that some of this stuff might be cut? Under the new Department of Education, federal, that sort of thing, know that money comes from some of these cuts that are out there. Or how assured are you gonna get those those grants and stuff that you have in the special revenue fund?
Through the state, I'm pretty confident that our High School Success, our SIA. And I'm pretty sure those are gonna stay because we have taxes in place that are. Our businesses support for our school districts. As far as um federal, we have about what, three hundred thousand in federal money approximately, it's approximately, yeah. And I think the concern is there, that what happens to that if if things happen at the federal government, absolutely.
Yeah, there's, there's a real concern, especially with Title Two and Title Four. That those funds will go away. Title One, we've been pretty well assured that that is probably gonna be fine. Uh, but Title Two and Title Four are very, very iffy right now, and that's about fifty. Sixty thousand dollars for those two, um, those two brands.
And that's professional development, Title Two is professional development for our students.
So if you were to sum up, what is gonna be the difference about? With the Jefferson School District in the next year compared to where you're running now? What is a part, what are the changes, is there changes or? Or, 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 if you had to tell somebody what's happening to Jefferson School District, what would you tell them?
We've had to reduce FTE. Of staff, so I.
You, you reduced some staff?
I've had to lay off staff.
And that affected some programs?
Yes.
What programs?
I can't say at this point in time because I haven't had conversations with everybody that I need to have conversations with. But yeah, we are looking at um having to reduce uh two point two five certified FTE and one point oh. Um, FTE in um my office.
What, which of the schools is gonna be impacted?
It's gonna be at the secondary level.
We have to make sure that our class sizes are good, we have to be responsible with the public funds that we receive. And so there's, we have to make sure that we're being the stewards of the money that comes in, right? Rate of return, you go to the store, you buy something, you want good quality, right? So we have to make sure that we are losing students, we have to make sure that that we have class sizes, right, good class sizes, right? We do have some small class sizes, and so we have to make sure that we're, we're. Shoring that up, right, cause last year we had a little trouble with elementary school, we had eleven, twelve students in one classroom. When someone went out on leave, we combined two classrooms, and that was the best way to save versus hiring another teacher. So we try to be really conservative when it comes to how we spend these public funds.
Well, I, I read in the paper about the other school district, and the sky seems to be falling, uh, and uh, but. But what I see here, you guys have done a pretty good job of moving from one year to the next, uh, it doesn't look too bad.
Well, it, right, and speaking from the past to the present. We've been working on this for a couple of years, last year, we had to look at our class size at the, at the elementary level. It's a little bit harder at the high school level and the secondary level. Um, but it, we had to shore up the elementary school knowing that our class sizes were low. And so, um, we just try to do our best, right? And it, I mean, it's bad that most of the increase we get of our state's full fund, cause we're getting, we're getting funded eleven point three six. We project to get funded with eleven point three six billion dollars. Last year it was ten point three, right? This year it's eleven point three six billion. Our associated payroll costs ate up that increase.
Yeah, yeah.
Four hundred thousand to purse and about two hundred and fifty thousand to unemployment.
Yeah, that's where it's.
Along with our enrollment.
Yeah, that's true.
Cause our enrollment amount is about three hundred thousand.
So you get a little bit more of the big, the big money, right, more of that money. But then the associated payroll costs come in and then your, your kids go down. So taking, you know, taking that formula, they, and I hope one day they look at that formula. You know, cause that formula has been since nineteen.
No, they changed the formula.
Did they change it?
That's why, that's why they're for money. In the eleven point three six, she changed the, it's the current service level funding formula, and the governor changed it.
Excellent, so, right, but the more we got, the PERS, the unemployment, it it ate it up.
Uh, you don't have any uh labor negotiations coming up on the basis of. How is that factored into this budget?
So we budget a certain percentage um for cost of living, so their COLA. And we also budget a certain amount um for insurance. So we know going into negotiations uh with our groups, that we budgeted X amount of dollars for each group. And so it's through that negotiation process um for the district. Um, and those groups to come up with a number that's within that budget. Uh, because if it goes above that budget, then we're talking about, hey, how do we pay for that? If you, you want more than what I budgeted for, then. That's people. So, um, we, we have budgeted for a, a COLA and an increase in insurance.
Well, you know, I served on this school board in nineteen eighty, when collective bargaining came in. And it was amazing how it changed how we budgeted, once we got into collective bargaining. We were sitting around the table just trying to learn the language. With uh your dad and that whole thing, we didn't know what the terms even meant in nineteen eighty. And uh, so it was, it was an interesting experience, and I suppose I've watched it now all through the years, what collective bargaining has done. To uh funding their schools. And uh, and I mean, they're everywhere, you know, like the cities and counties all have the same issues. So uh, it's, it's interesting, but um. Anyway, nice to be here, I'm eighty nine years old, I've been around here well. Last nineteen fifty four.
Your, your picture's up there, Larry, I've seen.
Yeah, well, I just liked it. Our pie chart for our expenditures for general funds, for just general funds, not including our grants. Our salaries and benefits are seventy three percent of our general fund.
The, the fringe benefits is what's really going up.
It's the incentive mandates.
We used to figure thirty three percent, but you're up, you're up above thirty three percent now.
Yeah.
There used to be a third, which basically fringe. And uh, so that, that area there is going up.
It has, it has.
I did also wanna mention, you know, the other, and as we were building this budget and and we were going through and looking at staffing and. What we're spending in in various areas, um, we did do an overall uh cut of twenty five percent of supplies from top to bottom.
And those are the things that we look at, we, do we need to replace that open position from a retired person, right? Um, how can we save this money in balance? Supplies went, um, do we need to look at trainings, do, I mean. We look at those things first before we even go into the RIF status, right? That's the last thing we wanna do, cause we're family here, right? So.
So Larry, you know, I, you were mentioning about, you know, the sky falling on a lot of the school districts around our area then. And here we at Jefferson, Jefferson seem to be doing pretty good. I'd like to pat ourselves on the back as a board, but I'll tell you, it's not the board so much, it's, it's our staff.
Yeah.
You know, our superintendent, Hattie, and Barbie, and all the rest in the district office, you know, they're, they're real um. Transparent in telling us on what's happening, you know, months before it's gonna happen, so we can kind of prepare for it, so. You know, all, all the credit needs to go here.
Our kids matter.
And our admin too, they're all aboard. They all work together, um, try and make this work, so.
And we've been trying to save money.
They tried in enrollment with this stuff. In nineteen eighty, we had eight hundred, nine hundred students in this district, we tell you the history, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So you can see where we are, what they, what, what are we looking at, what are we looking at, forty five years? We had eight hundred and nine hundred, we built that new high school. I came on the board just as our high school was built, and we built that building for six hundred students.
When we look back.
So that's, that's, that's the problem with all these school districts is. They try to enroll them and competition. Competition from other schools.
Yeah.
It's amazing how many kids move around this district, going to other places. Some of them, I go, I have my next door neighbor, their son goes to Salem. You know, and I tell you, I still, his dad, you know, I don't, you know, my question, ask me, why is he going to school in Salem? But these buses are running all over, my daughter drives the school bus. And they're hauling these students back and forth everywhere, it's amazing, they're in the Salem, they're going everywhere. The, the bus, the bus budget must be horrendous in a, in a district like this. And they run those buses all over the country.
For our little district, for six hundred and, or seven hundred and fifteen, what we budgeted on this year, it's about nine hundred thousand. And we get seventy percent of that back in our state's full fund, but we still have to pay the thirty five.
Thirty percent, that's an awful extravagant cost, you know, where we haul these kids. We, one, 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 one kid had a big bus, they're driving all over. Yeah. And all the kids from Mill City to Albany and back every day.
Yeah.
One kid. One kid.
We have any public, any additional public comment?
Did anyone sign up to, to talk?
No.
No? There any online?
No.
Okay, I would like to move to approve the Jefferson Dits School District fourteen J proposed budget for this year, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six. And letting the tax rate of four point eight one three eight for one thousand.
All right. Sarah?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Carol? Tracy?
Aye.
Terry? Larry?
Yep.
Myself, aye. Pass it. And we're good. I just wanted to do that.
Woke everybody up.
Thank you guys all for.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and love and enrollment today.
We last told her a hundred kids since twenty nineteen.